I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Gig Harbor work-study session of May 6, 2021. Please respond after I call your name. Councilmember Abersole.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Frannich.
Here.
Councilmember Hines.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Woo.
Here.
And this is Mayor Kikun. On staff, we have our city administrator, Bob Larson.
Here.
Is, I don't see our chief, Kelly Bucy. Okay. Are the pictures all the only people here? I'm not going to call my whole list that's not, that I don't see them.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, okay. We've got our city clerk, Molly Townsley.
Here.
We've got, I believe we have our assistant city clerk, Josh Stecker, or not?
Here.
Okay, there you are. I'm sorry. City attorney, Daniel Kenny.
Here.
Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Here.
Great. Anyone I have not called? Okay, great. And then, I don't know, I don't see a copy of the agenda around here. But we have the YMCA lease. And we have, actually, we have administered, we have executive session first. So let's, we are going to pause this meeting. It is 3:02, and we're going to proceed to go into executive session with that action maybe taken. And then come out of that and re-connect to this meeting.
And we'll estimate, what does council think, 10 or 15 minutes? Councilmember Denson, maybe you could, what do you think?
I would, let's.
We can always withstand.
Let's do 10, then. Let's see if we can get it done in 10.
Great.
Mayor, this is the city administrator, Bob Larson. Does the council need to leave this meeting entirely and go back into new one? So they have to actually close this out then?
Yeah, you should close out of this meeting and log into the go-to-meeting link that you got in the email.
All right. Okay, and there was that email sent just recently?
It was sent this morning, probably at about 8:30.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on any of that?
This meeting will stay open. I'll stay with this meeting, Josh and I will. We still have two attendees, and so they can just be patient and wait until you all log back in.
So completely get out of this meeting, but you can use the same login to get back in?
Yes, you guys will leave.
Okay, thank you.
The executive session is being extended an additional 10 minutes, and will resume at 3:22 for regular session.
Wait. We're resuming the City of Gig Harbor study session of May 6, 2021. The time right now is 3:28. We're waiting a couple minutes for a couple more council members going from executive session.
This is Minister Larson. I noticed over, maybe they're coming over now, but they were both over in the public section, Councilor Hines. I'd say they're here now, though. Thanks for pulling them in, Josh. Or Molly, whoever did it.
We'll wait one minute for Jim's portrait.
He should be here.
There you are. Okay. We have all council members that under roll call that we did earlier, present as well as our attorney and staff. And we's, let's see, do I have a hand raised by, yes, councilmember Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to authorize the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement consistent with the discussion in executive session.
Second.
There's a second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
Abstained? Okay, motion passes six to one. Go ahead and I will, I will go ahead and initial these today, and then we will, I believe, do we pass that on to Daniel or to the, probably to the seller, correct?
To the seller, yeah.
Okay, we'll get going on that. Great.
Mayor, if I could, if I just, I want to acknowledge Councilor Denson and her support and assistance on this. I think that was really, really well done and really appreciated. Thank you.
There was, there was a lot of people involved, including a lot of staff, like Jeff and Katrina, so, and then a lot of community partners as well. So I just kind of put it together.
You get the, thank you, the council member.
Just a second. I'm trying to get my thing to stay on one panel. Okay, that was executive session. Our agenda is the YMCA Sports Complex 1A lease agreement, and then we have administration update on a few items. With that, we will go over the why. Go ahead. We have, I've worked with Daniel and Jeff and Bob extensively with the why. We've also informed many of you periodically where we're at. We've worked through the last hurdles, and you do have the sheets that Daniel had sent over Thursday or Friday, as well as the lease agreement. There is some exhibits that I believe Jeff will put up on the, on the monitor. Go ahead and maybe go over those first two sheets or so. Daniel, anyway, I'll turn over to you, Daniel.
Sure, appreciate that. And I, yeah, I'll kick it over to Jeff at some point here, but what I wanted to do is to explain the memo that was in your packet so that we understand what the lease terms are and where things stand. What I tried to do was build upon the prior memo that you received so that not everything looks brand new, because not everything is brand new in these lease discussions. And so what I did is I added red italics to that memo to show you where changes were. So I thought I would start by going through just those areas that have changed since the last discussion. Frankly, it's not a whole lot. And so that's, that should be reassuring that the agreement is very similar to what you have seen before. And so if you wanted to go to that memorandum that's dated April 30, 2021, it is the only attachment to the study session or the special meeting agenda packet. And so I will start to go through that. I'm not going to share my screen, because I'm hoping this will be more of a question-answer discussion, but I can if necessary. The first change is on page two, and that is related to something that has already come up with you, but that got incorporated into the document, so I just wanted to highlight that. And again, it's in red italics. And that is the requirement that the YMCA provide the permit applications by June 30, 2023. They have to provide notice in advance of that if they're not going to hit that deadline. This is the deadline that was created to provide an out for both parties, should that not happen. And so it puts it far enough out that they can kind of get through the pandemic a little bit, get their ducks in a row, submit those applications so it can move forward. But if they don't do that, they can say, we didn't do it, or we're not going to do it, and we're going to walk away, and the city can do that as well. If nobody does anything and nobody says anything to that effect, it will proceed forward and they will have to submit those permits. So it just provides a singular checkpoint. So rather than making the decision right now be everything and everything, it gets everybody on track and provides that one checkpoint. This is included in another section below as well, because it touches on two different topics. And so we'll talk about this again in a second, but this is included, and again, this is consistent with what we talked about in our last discussion on this topic. The next section is right below that, and the obligation to complete the fundraising. This was a comment, I can't remember who brought it up. I think maybe councilmember Frannich, you did, and I think others agreed with your comment. It did originally list a, an exact number on what they should fundraise. They agreed that that's not really accurate in this particular section, and they proposed a revision that tenant will fully and completely fund the project and complete the construction no later than December 31, 2024. Previously, that said they will fundraise a minimum of, I think it was maybe 3.85. And so they are committing to fully fundraise and complete the project by the project timeline. And so that language that didn't really tie out well is gone. And so this, that section has been revised. And of course, yell out or raise your hand or anything if you've got any comments or questions as I go. And so if you keep scrolling down to the next red section, it's down payment on the YAF grant on page four of six of that PDF. This section was basically wholly revised by Jeff to accurately reflect how the money would flow from the YAF grant to the YMCA. And that goes through a process of them submitting, the city reviewing, the city getting approval from YAF, and then paying the YMCA. And so really, this is just, just to bring it consistent with the terms of that grant for the, for the song and dance. Originally, Jeff, Jeff accurately pointed out, there was a provision that said they won't start the project until they've gotten all the YAF grant money. Of course, that's not the case. That's not how that works. And so they will proceed and hit milestones and submit and get paid on that. And of course, Jeff, if I've misstated anything, please correct me. Okay, and then the next section is permits. This is the same section that we talked about very first above. So again, it's the same thing with the June 30, 2023 deadline, and it talks about how they, that is the, that is the moment that if they haven't submitted those permits, there's an opportunity to walk away. The one clarification is that this section includes the final bullet point is that if, if either party decides to terminate, the landlord, the city is entitled to the design and permitting documentation, but needs to pay the YMCA for that. That was consistent with prior discussions, but was not totally tied out in the agreement in that manner. And, but the city is not obligated to do that. So if they walk away and the city says, we're going to do something different with this. We've got another vision that we're going to pursue. We don't have to spend money on what they put together for the project that they didn't proceed forward with. But of course, if the city is going to do the project anyway, and maybe has a different partner or doesn't want a partner, is going to do it on their own at that juncture, assuming that there is, that they've decided not to move forward, then the city can get those materials and not have to redo that work that has already been completed, and they'd be made whole for that. And so just a couple other ones down on the next page in the city contribution section, there was just a clarification on the second bullet about the fire hydrants, that those fire hydrants are just the ones on Phase 1B. We're not doing fire hydrants everywhere, because practically speaking, the city couldn't do that, because it would require knowing the grade and getting access to areas that wouldn't necessarily be ready for that yet. So we won't be doing that. And so the final bullet, and again, this was brought up, I think, at the last meeting, is that the landlord, the city, will design and construct initially at the city's cost, the concession stand restroom structure, and then will build out only the portion of it that's the restroom for functional use, because we've also committed to maintaining and operating the restroom itself while Phase 1A, excuse me, is being completed, because there will be people that need those restrooms on Phase 1B, et cetera. But the concession will not be built out. That's not something the city will build out nor operate in that interim time. And then it says that the tenant, the YMCA, is responsible to reimburse the landlord, the city, for all of the design permitting and construction costs within 18 months of the completion of the concession stand restroom. So we're only paying for that upfront, because we want to use it for Phase 1B. We want that facility open and accessible to the public when they're using Phase 1B, which will be done sooner. But everybody is acknowledging in this agreement that they agreed to pay for it and do it. So this is the compromise to make sure it gets done. The restroom portion gets built out and gets started to use by the public. They have 18 months then from when that building opens to pay the city back for all of those costs. So it is not a city cost. It is just, the city is doing it first. And then the Phase 1B section was revised entirely. The last version that you saw basically stripped everything about Phase 1B out, because we're keeping those very separate, and they weren't going to do any of the grading or anything like that. So that all remains, but a couple of important things were added. One of which is the water and sewer mainline connections having a date of June 30, 2022, and that is so that they can then have that in place, nor that is, proceed with their project. And then the bullet two is providing safe and accessible access from the Tom Taylor facility parking lot through the Phase 1B project. And that is just to make sure that they don't get kind of cut off. So there's the water and sewer mainline accessibility at the site. And then the Phase 1B construction completion date may be modified by future agreement. There is a completion date for Phase 1B in there, but we can always look at that and modify that. Excuse me, I've been talking a lot and quickly. And I think that was the, and then the final thing is the exhibits at the end. Exhibit B, they outlined in a little bit more detail. It's not overly detailed, the description of the Phase 1A improvements. That's largely consistent with what's required for the grants, in terms of field size, lighting, things like that. And then exhibit C is a list of encumbrances on the property, so that the city knows what's covering the property when we're giving it away, and they know what they're accepting. And so that got updated with the new title report to make sure that it was accurate. There were some changes since 2017, nothing over the top. Frankly, it was the couple of things that happened in 2017, when the title report was pulled originally, just the next two documents related to that, and then a couple of amendments on things. So nothing out of the ordinary, and those got updated. So those exhibits would have been changed. Everything else is as you've seen it before, and should be consistent with your expectations. And then I think I'll dish to Jeff to see if he has anything to add, but then would be open to any questions that you may have related to this in advance of it coming to a regular business meeting.
Thank you, Daniel. Counsel, I fully support all of the revisions that Daniel has provided, and I don't have anything else to add, though I do have the exhibits available if you'd like to look at any of the exhibits.
It's councilmember Abersole.
Yeah, thank you. I have no problem with it either, other than my concern is this, the June 30, 2023 date. I am concerned that I don't feel that the stupid virus potentially could be going on until then, and I don't want to have this whole deal scuttled because of it. So I almost want to feel like maybe potentially extending that date to 2024, but I don't know what that, what ramifications of that are either. So maybe I don't want to do anything, but I'm just concerned about that 2023 date. I don't know if that gives everything enough time.
You know, I think it's a good way to start with where we've gone. You know, I've, I've already seen a lot of social media blaming me for extending it to 2024 or '25, which
Right.
isn't even true. And so I would hate to have misinformation out there. You know, I believe that any party could change, two parties could change this at a later date if they, if they both mutually agreed upon it. So I think we, none of us know what the future holds, but I think this is a start.
But what I'm afraid of is just, you know, two years down the road, someone saying, geez, we just didn't expect this thing to go on this long, you know, and I, I kind of do. But I have no crystal ball either, so that's, I'll just, I'll just say that and be done. Thank you.
Go ahead, Bob.
Mayor, counsel, the, to that issue, the YMCA represented by Charlie Davis is is prepared, I believe, with the terms we've got, that they're, they're going to be presenting to their board. And so we've agreed upon that date. There's always a potential to have to come back later on something, but as if we sit right now, they're comfortable with that date, and they want to proceed, I believe. And that's why it's on the agenda for Monday night. We expect their board to approve this as well.
And I'll just quickly add that there is language in the, in the agreement that says that if no such termination is timely given, and that's termination at the date that you've identified, Councilmember Abersold, then this agreement will not terminate, and the YMCA agrees to submit the required applications as soon as reasonably practical after the application deadline. And so if there is a, if, if everybody doesn't want to terminate and, and doesn't terminate, they, they then have to provide those applications as a reasonable timeline. And if there is a, you know, a circumstance that is standing in the way of that, that would be, I think, taken into account in the reasonable timeline. I don't think it would be just an open-ended until we feel comfortable with the pandemic, but you know, if they can identify barriers that they need to get beyond, that's something we could do. And then, of course, as the mayor said, the parties could renegotiate a particular term such as this in the future.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, we talked to Charlie about an hour ago, and he, he is, if we don't have any changes, he's, he's willing to sign it tomorrow. So, and that obviously means the board already has given him the authorization. So the goal was to be able to go into Monday night with the Y already signing it, which would be great. The other thing is, is, you know, Daniel's going to be traveling back Monday, and he can listen in if he had to, but we wanted to make sure that all your questions were answered when he could actually be right here at the meeting. So again, if you have any questions on this, now would be the time as opposed to Monday. You know, we will have attorney at, at city, representing the city, but not Daniel, who's been so involved with it. So now's the time to ask any questions if you, if you haven't already.
And I'm happy to report that I did not receive any phone calls since my email, so that's good news.
Okay, well, great. Then I would come a long ways. It's been three years, and two years of this, and a year of the MOU. So I appreciate all of your time, counsel, and you've obviously been involved in this yourself and very supportive. Otherwise, we would be going on for hours and hours, and, and we wouldn't have gotten this far without your help. So thank you.
Well said, Mayor. Thank you. It's been a pretty hard process, but I know that we're, I think we're in a great position right now, and I think everyone wants to remain optimistic on this particular issue as we go forward.
I think our, our sports will be truly appreciative of all our hard work, too, our athletic teams, and, and the ones that want to use the field without having to join a team as well. So. Councilmember Markley.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I don't have a question. I, I just want to say, this is really exciting. This has been something that I was working on and Robin was working on with Parks Commission when it was just in its very little infancy stages. And, you know, when people came to vote with their play money and all that. So it's, it's really cool to, to be at this stage now and see that this might actually happen while our kids are still young enough to play sports on these fields. So it's just super cool. And I'm, I'm so, I'm so happy that the YMCA is still wanting to go forward, even in the midst of their, their hardship with the pandemic. And I have to say, if this thing is still going in 2023, I don't know what, I, I hope this pandemic better be over by 2023. But anyway, I, I understand what Councilmember, Councilmember Abersold is saying, and I'm, I'm sensitive to that. I, I don't think it's going to be over anytime soon, but I do hope it's not a whole nother two years from now. So anyway, thank you to staff and to Daniel Kenny and to council, and just everybody in the community that has been supporting this project. This is just really exciting that this could come to fruition very, very soon. So it's really exciting.
Great. Okay, go ahead. And now we have an administration update. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to walk council through a couple items here. We're continuing to work with the Chamber of Commerce on, on the lease for the facility. And since we're still in the pandemic, I, I know time is of the essence here, but they are continuing month to month at the same rates as they've had. But Mayor and I would like to invite councilmembers to come down in groups of twos and threes, just to visit the center space. It's a good idea of what the visitor center area really encompasses as part of the larger building itself. We'd like you to at least view that so you get some, some understanding of what we're dealing with and how we would like to approach the chamber about the facility and the use of it, as well as the costs and how we, they're being represented in the lease themselves. And so we'll be contacting each of you, you know, offering to meet you down there, and just, and we'll obviously get ahold of the chamber folks, including Warren Zimmerman, and let them know, we just want to have the councilors view it, if you haven't viewed it lately. So I'll be coming up in the next week or two. Any comments to that, Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, part of this is because we're, we're going to have to put, I don't know, $50,000, $100,000 into this building. It's a lot of money into the roof, into that whole air conditioning, and into the ducking work, and we, in the last 10 years, we got $6,000 a year of rent out of this building. So that's, that's $60,000 in 10 years. It's not even going to cover. So the point, one, part of my point is, the chamber is asking for 75% off the rent, and 50% because of the use of the space, and 50% for us to pay for their staff. And I want council to really get a good look at that, because I, I'm not sure if we need 50% of the building to answer someone's questions if they walk in. If someone walks into the chamber and you hand them a guide, or you talk to them, I don't know if we need 50% of the whole building or 50% of the reduction plus 50 more and plus 50% more, which is, you know, I don't, I don't know if we need all that. So maybe we only need, you know, 20, 20 square feet or 40 square feet or so. I don't know if we need a whole half a building. And so what I really think is important is for council to actually come down, take a look at the space themselves. So, so, you know, if, if we're going to, if the rent's $2,200, and we're going to give them three quarters of that rent off, you know, okay. But do we need that much space? What, what do we, what does council, I think council needs to get, to get a good look at what they feel they need to warrant the money off of, of the rent, considering we're going to have to put 60 to 100 grand in it as well. So I think the best way to, to have council make an educated decision is for them to actually go down there and take a look at it. So we'll, we'll be getting you in groups of three to be able to do that, so that you can make a good educated decision. Councilmember Markley.
Um, yes, thank you. So what staff members are they wanting us to pay for?
Go ahead, Bob. You've been working with this more than I.
Sure. The, the, who we're giving credit for, if you will, are the, the staff that are operating the visitor center portion. And the, under the current lease, the chamber is required to either have their own, either supplemental employee or, or hiring others, and we're having volunteers, a combination thereof. And so they're, they're, they have a certain number of hours per day, days per week, and times of the year that they have to have at staff, and they have to ensure that that occurs. And they've, they've got it in the, in the lease itself, the value of those, those folks who helped out down at the, at the chamber office.
Okay. My second question would be, if council determines that they don't need as much space as they are wanting, or they determine that they don't need as much space, what would we use the rest of the building for? Would that still be something we would use, like the meeting rooms that they have in there, for instance, or would it be a community benefit? I mean, obviously, we're the landlord of the property, so we got to take care of the stuff that's wrong, because we're the landlord. That's our, that's our responsibility. No matter what it costs, that's what we have to pay, because we're the landlord, just like any other landlord would have to pay for a renter that's having major structural issues or new roof or whatever. That wouldn't fall on the tenant. That falls on the landlord, so that makes sense. But what, you know, if we don't use it, the main portion or the large portion that they're using now, what else would the city use it for?
We would probably let them use it. We would just not give them credit for us for needing to use it on our behalf. So it's not like we'd rent it to someone else. We would just say, we don't need 50% of this, we don't need to give you 50% reduction, because we don't need 50% of the building. We just want you to answer questions when people walk in, give them whatever pamphlets you need, and we don't need a 50% of the building to do that. So there's no reason to reduce it 50%. That's what. So, there's no reason to reduce it fifty percent. That's what, that's why.
Okay. So, the chamber would still retain the area. The, the building would be theirs for them to use. We just wouldn't give a credit toward that.
Right. Like at the, at the Scancy Park right now, people are answering questions basically, you know, right when you walk in, in about a ten by ten room, they answer the, all the questions someone needs. So, yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, you have a couple of council members. You have your hands up.
Councilmember Woo.
Yes, thank you. So, I, I want, I hope that when we make our visit to that building, that it's set up inside the building just as it was in December of twenty twenty and that things have not been rearranged in anticipation of the council coming for a visit. Can we do anything about that?
Well, we, we want to be courteous to tell them we're coming ahead of time, but they are back to being reopened. So, I don't know if that answers your question. You know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna just pop in without telling them that we're gonna come, but we don't want to necessarily give them weeks' notice. So, I think, did that answer your question at all? We're hoping to do this early next week and we haven't informed the chamber of it yet and they have been open.
So, Mike, my, it didn't answer my question. Sorry. I, I really want to make sure that things are not staged for the council visit.
I agree with you.
Is there anything we can do about that?
No. Totally agree with you. Um, we'll just tell, maybe we won't tell them when we're coming in and we'll do it soon.
I, I wouldn't expect the chamber to, I don't know, I wouldn't expect them to stage it. I, I think rather than you've been in there recently, I've got a pretty good idea of what it looked like and I don't think they can stage it much differently what it is already set up for and that's the visitor center in the front. So, it's, it's pretty obvious spaces. There's nothing there other than the open space and the, and the counters.
We were hoping to do this a couple of weeks ago and just contact each of you and just pop in there. But then for, with time, we didn't get to it. So.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Abersole.
Are we still, or is there a bathroom that we're utilizing for the public, that building?
I think so. We'll find out. I think so.
Because I know that there's, I, I did check and there is a sign that says restrooms right across the street up on that pole.
Right.
Well, and part of this is because if, you know, let's just say they have thirteen people come in and, and, or twenty people come in in a month. We're paying, um, we're paying for all that time that someone's not helping someone. So, if we use fifty percent of the building and fifty percent of, pay fifty percent of someone sitting there and only one person comes in a day for ten minutes, we're paying fifty percent of that whole day's wages.
Right. And the other, the other welcoming center is where the, where the Harbor House are wild watches?
It's volunteers that we don't pay for.
Right. But the parking down there is terrible and if I were coming into the city as a, a non-citizen or a person who's never been to Gig Harbor, that chamber, or not the chamber, but the, the place there would be much more convenient for me as a driver than trying to get downtown.
Right. I think if we've all identified, it's important to have. It's just to what capacity do people want it?
Right.
Councilmember Markley.
Um, yes, thank you. I'm, I was just, I was just there a couple of days ago. I'm trying to figure out what they would rearrange. Like, like Bob said, it's pretty. I mean, the whole entryway is the, is the visitor area and then the rest is, it's walls and buildings or, you know, rooms and a kitchen and a conference room where they let the community members come in and do training in there and stuff and they provide that free of charge. I mean, I don't know what else they would rearrange. I, it's, it's like pretty much set kind of in its, I don't know. Anyway, I thought, I was surprised, I was surprised by that question. So, I was wondering what you meant by that. Like, what would they even change? How would they try to make it like sway our deci, I, I don't know. I'm just confused by that because it's kind of, it's just looked the same for a while. So, and it just seems like that would be hard for them to do, to change really much of the building as it is now. But I have it in my mind clearly because I was just there two days ago. So, if it does change, I'll let you know.
It counts for my Robert soul.
Yeah, Matt Damon's there to open the door for us. Can we get a clarification again on those figures? How much they're, they're wanting in the reduction? Because I heard, I heard seventy-five percent, then I heard fifty percent. And so, I'm not exactly sure as far as what the dollar figure is that they are looking at. I believe you say it was twenty-two hundred dollars a month that they, they.
Sure. I can respond, Mayor, if you like. This is city administrator, Mayor Council. The, right now, the lease is, has a value of two thousand dollars on it and fifty percent of that is,
Thousand.
goes to the, goes to the, one thousand dollars goes to the chamber is payment for their portion of the space that they rent. And the other thousand dollars is a, is a credit for them to staff and facilitate the visitor center. And then for the chambers portion of that fifty percent, it's further reduced by fifty percent or half in an in-kind to reflect that they sometimes have their own staff that they have to put out front to help with the, the visitor center. They, as I said earlier, they, they have to staff at certain, certain days of the week and certain number of hours per day and, and certain times during the seasons. So, that it's a, it's an obligation. And that was what was written into the contract or the lease agreement, I want to say about ten years ago now. And then it got extended about five years ago.
So, they want at least five hundred dollars from the city a month?
It would be, they're right now paying in cash five hundred dollars of the two thousand and the rest is in-kind for their services to facilitate and operate the visitor center. The, the, the negotiations we're having now, and they've already acknowledged this, is that they've agreed to allow us to add CPI, the Consumer Price Index, for the last, I believe, ten years to the amount. And then we've got a new value right now, I believe, of two thousand four hundred and I want to say forty-eight dollars. I don't have to tip my tongue, but it's roughly about twenty-four hundred dollars. And again, this, they, they would like to use the same formula, that it would be split to twelve hundred dollars and then half of that again would be actual rent payment, which is a little over six hundred dollars a month. As the mayor described earlier, we've got, we've got a roof we're gonna have to eventually replace as well as the insulation for that. And then heating, venting and air conditioning system that's gonna have to be replaced eventually too. And we, we know that's going to, we believe, exceed fifty thousand dollars. And so, we would like to get more cash in order to help pay for this out of the rent.
You know, I know that if there's, the, the front fit is not quite fifty, it's not fifty percent of the building. I've been in there enough anyway. We were just generalizing it saying fifty percent, but the front isn't fifty percent. And having us pay fifty percent more, you know, giving a seventy-five percent reduction in, in the rent seems to me a little bit, um, I think we can utilize what the city might need of a visitor center with something that's fifty percent credit is what I think is adequate. I think it seems a little bit much, but again, I'm not going to be voting on this. I just want council to be able to make an educated decision.
I, I wanted to add to what Mayor just said. Once you see the actual space, you're gonna gain a perspective that the, the actual percentage of what the chamber actually uses for their business operations versus what is used for the actual visitor center area. And then you have to factor in that there's some common area that's utilized by both the visitor center purpose as well as the chambers offices, for instance, the public restroom that's there and a few other things. You'll gain a better perspective of what the actual split could look like perhaps, rather than what it is right now.
And if we're gonna use more, let's, let's put some of our stuff that's at City Hall down there. We've got a lot of visitor stuff that's stored here at City Hall that could, could be stored there. Okay, so we'll be reaching out to you.
Thank you. The next one is the employee engagement. I want to give you an update. Right now, we've got nine employees who have expressed interest in serving on the committee and I've asked them to submit or at least express their interest by no later than tomorrow. We've got a good cross-section right now. We've got department heads, we've got supervisors and we've got some employees. We just, we're still gonna be looking for, for someone from the operations and maintenance side. We do not have anyone who's expressed interest yet, but I'm gonna reach out to, to that group tomorrow if I don't hear from anybody by then. Then after that, we'll schedule the committee meeting. But before we do that, we want to identify who the council members will be. And in order to do that, I am going to draw by random selection, three names out of a hat.
So, just right before you do that, Councilmember Abersole, you.
Yeah, I just had a question. So, of those nine employees, are we, are we making them do this on their already work schedule? Or are they doing this after work? Where? You know, I know, I hear how stressed everyone is and, you know, we're behind on things and can't get stuff done. And so, I'm just concerned that.
It's a, it's a very good question. I believe we're gonna be have to do it during regular work time.
Okay.
Given the schedules.
Thank you.
First of all, I wanted, the person drawing the names will be none other than our distinguished city clerk, Molly Towesley. And she's, I can, can submit that she is alone in her office at the moment and she has no, no bias. I also want to first ask, does anyone on the council want not to be considered?
Raise your hand.
There's no point in putting your name in the hat. You don't want to be considered beyond the committee. So.
Councilmember Markley, you want your name withdrawn?
I've already stated on the record that I believe it would be a conflict of interest. So.
This is Councilmember Markley's name. Okay. Just to make sure you all see, this is the hat. It's clear. Councilmember Abersole, we're going to fold these in little pieces. Councilmember Denson.
No, I, I know Molly and I discussed this and she suggested not, not.
Number Franny.
Not make light of this because it's a very important topic, but I was going to ask Molly if she would represent herself as a certified public accountant.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm a certified municipal clerk. Councilmember Hines. Councilmember Rodenberg. And Councilmember Woo. So, all the names are there except for Councilmember Markley. There's a little basket and they're falling through, but they're all still in there. I'm gonna drop.
Oh, one at a time, please announce each.
I'm looking. I am not looking, believe me.
Make sure they don't fall through.
They're mixed up. Nope, nope. They are not falling through. I've got my hand underneath. Make sure they don't fall through. Mixing them up, mixing them up. I can't see the names. And drawing the first name is Councilmember Hines.
All right.
The second name, keep back there. Dropped it, but I got it. Same one, Councilmember Woo. And the third name, back, back in there. It's Councilmember Franny. So, you know it's a fair deal because, you know, I didn't fudge on anything.
Dang.
Very good.
Anyway, we brought that to you before the twenty-fourth.
All right. Anything further on that?
No. Right.
And now, I have something to read to you. I want to inform you that I've decided to retire from my position and from working full-time in city management. My reasons are entirely personal. I reached a stage in my life when I must consider my family, my personal interests and my health over my career. Mayor Kuhn and I have had several discussions about my decision and to work through the details of my departure as well as to plan and ensure a smooth transition. I want to thank Mayor Kuhn for the opportunity to serve Gig Harbor. I've come to appreciate his role, especially during this pandemic. I've admired councils and Mayor Kuhn's perseverance during these past several months. He worked really hard and I really appreciate all its support and I'm confident that our employees and our community appreciate the support they've received from you during this time. Our employees have continued to do an incredible job for Gig Harbor while working through an extremely difficult and challenging period in the city's history. We are fortunate to have such hardworking and talented employees who provide essential services to the community. I cannot say enough about their dedication and diligence managing and operating city services and programs. I also continue to be, to be inspired and encouraged by the strong spirit of volunteerism that I've found in this community, especially Mayor Kuhn and you folks on the council, as well as those that serve in our boards and commission, commissions. That spirit can be the catalyst for a better organization. My last day will be mid-July. It has not been determined with certainty, but I've offered to Mayor Kuhn to be flexible in order to allow that transition to occur to a qualified and experienced interim city administrator who's capable of gaining your trust, building a good working relationship with Mayor Kuhn, you and our employees, and continuing to advance the projects and responsibilities of our departments and programs. Thank you for serving on the council and I wish you, Mayor Kuhn, and our employees a bright and productive future.
So, the city with Gig Harbor recognizes Bob's decision to retire as city administrator. Everyone has to do what's right for them. I appreciate that he had shared his thoughts in a way that was kind enough to give us a bit more time and was written into his contract to make this transition as smooth as possible. Though we were only able to have his leadership for a short time, he was beneficial in so many ways. His caring attitude and skills were very helpful in guiding us, as well as guiding us through the weather, weathering the pandemic through his whole time here. Bob and I have discussed various qualified and experienced individuals who could be an interim city administrator. Obviously, by announcing that I'm not rerunning, doesn't make sense to go out for a permanent one, but to let the new mayor and new council decide on a permanent one. So, we'll be working to complete the transaction, this transition of having an interim city administrator and discuss it with council and with staff. We should have someone on board prior to his departure. Gig Harbor is in good shape financially and our city services continue to perform toward our citizens' countenance and appreciate. We very much appreciate all Bob's attention for all of us, all the citizens and staff and council. And on behalf of the city, we thank Bob for all that he has done here and we wish him the best as well as his family. Any questions for staff and the council?
Sorry to see you go, Bob.
Yeah. Yeah, no questions. Just sad, but, but glad to, glad to know you're gonna do what's best for you and your family. Thank you for everything that you have done up until this point. We're sorry to see you go.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
I just wanted to just share a couple of the thoughts if I could. Obviously, I thought I'd never reached the stage of actually retiring city management, but it's been a great ride. And I think thirty-seven years is a, is a good career. I've had a lot of good fortunes, worked with a lot of good mayors and council members. Everyone that I've worked with, I consider to be, the work they put in and the volunteerism that they, they show to the community is outstanding. And that's no exception to you folks either, but I've had some good discussions with my family, my extended family. And I can't say it, any one thing, as you can imagine, there's a lot of things going on there deciding to retire, but I've got other, other stronger interests. I just do, I just do not want to work full-time any longer. A good opportunity to do this, you need to do this.
Very sad to see you go. Thank you so much for everything you've done, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks for giving us so much leadership.
So, yes, I'd like to thank you too for your leadership, for your patience. I hope you stay in this community and become one of those wonderful volunteers because I think you have a lot to offer. Again, thank you so much for your, the time you put in and, and your professionalism.
Thank you. I, Jane and I, my wife, both, we, we want to stay here. We, we love the community. We want to be, I want to become a volunteer. And so, if anybody's got any suggestions for me, I gotta get reactivated with my Qantas club that I, they took me on. I know Councilor Abersole is a good member there, but that and I want to volunteer in other, other community organizations. I want to become. I want to become become a strong member of this great community. We we love it here, and we're looking forward to hopefully a a long, long, healthy retirement and our golden years, so to speak. So thank you.
I'll call you, Bob. I got some ideas for you.
I've I've got a business card for somebody. I know that I'd really like to help out and support that's on Jane and my list too, so I, we're looking forward to it.
Yes, thank you, Bob. And you remember, in retirement, you can always become a council member.
Well, unfortunately, that would be Pierce County. We live just outside the city limits in the grow urban growth area. So I'll probably be working with my neighborhood to seek annexation from you folks.
Let us know where you live.
I want city water and sewer, at least sewer.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's nothing else for the good of the order, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 It is adjourned. It is adjourned.
Thank you all.